For those who'd like to join for the pledge of allegiance, please do so by standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before Mike jumps in, I just wanted to let you guys know, we had a pre-con with our community crossings contractor, J H Rudolph, they will be starting to mobilize by hopefully the end of May. They are looking to finish before school starts. The last shrink they're going to do is Benjamin Court in Quail, because Chris Combs will not have his triaxles off of that road until June. Therefore, we do not want our new road being damaged. Another sad note, because of the way that the budget went for the state of Indiana, they have recalled the 2025-2 community crossings. Therefore, the city will not have a 2025 community crossings project. The one we are working on is 24-2. We don't ever go in for the January calls. And now we're going to have to wait until next year to apply again. So, I am going to ask for you guys to stay alert on your roads. If we need anything that's about emergency-wise, I need pictures and we'll go from there. But as far as road paving for 25, we're tapped on what community crossings is. So, and for next year, at this moment, get used to it. So, I just, I just wanted you guys to know with it, so.
It's just another opportunity.
I know winter was harsh and I know you guys are gonna see a lot. We have a lot of roads being paved this year, thank God, we got the 1.5 million dollars from the state. So otherwise, we'll just do our best to keep things patched and clean and neat as we can. I do. I'll email them out to you all. And if, is there anything you guys, I want to ask from me? Nope? Awesome. Then I'm gonna go downstairs and get some stuff ready, so.
I want to say too, before Sarah leaves, that Thursday, whatever night it was, down there, Zach, Sarah, Jeff, police, fire.
Heather.
Heather was down there. We definitely had a presence and did a really good job of communicating with each other, keeping everything going. We had the insurance on the phone right after that happened. And so, I mean, I think everything went well as far as coordinating, mayor was there, obviously. And I think we did see, Sherry was there, I think Chad was there. Jim, did you come by in a golf cart?
I came by in my truck.
Your truck, okay, I saw you there too, so. Appreciate everybody coming by, I don't know if you were there or not, I didn't see you, but that's.
For those that did hear some of Jordan's speak, on his insurance policy is unreal when I say that. He bought an additional five on a balloon, so that'll cover. It's not anything that's not public. And it's okay. That was turned down. So on that, he is, he is correct when he says his insurance, his insurance is great and he is covered. So, I don't want anybody to worry on that note, cool that. And that was all.
Chad Pryor. Sean Rosen.
Here.
Jim Miller.
Here.
Sherry Severs. Mike Webb.
Here.
Attorney Mark Phillips.
Here.
President Webb, you do have a quorum and Mayor Wyatt is out of town.
All right. Everybody have a chance to read the minutes?
Make the motion to approve the council minutes from 4:125.
All in favor, respond with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Mayor's update? I have nothing. Tammy Mark?
Oh, I do have one thing.
Okay.
I'm excited that we are hosting our first series of webinars for the budget. I'm a district director for our clerk treasurers and myself, as well as five district clerk treasurers, decided that since we have so many new clerk treasurers and council this year, that we wanted to take this a little bit more in depth. And we're gonna be doing a six-week seminar. It's all on webinars and it will break down each budget series, like the pre-budget worksheet and the financials, to kind of show you how we get to from step A to step B. Those are, I will send you guys all the links, but I wanted to give you guys the dates. Super excited about it. It will be all clerk treasurers and the district area and the whole state of Indiana that will be on this. Baker Tilly is doing this for us free of charge. I've already been in contact with several of our vendors and they're gonna, we're gonna be doing door prizes to try to get everybody to watch, you know, the webinars and stuff like that. So, anyway, you guys are invited. It's definitely something, if you've never been through the whole budget thing, I know a lot of times it just, you guys just do the salary ordinance and then come down at the approval, but it'll be a nice thing for you guys to learn a little bit more about. So, and anyone's welcome, so. Excited about that.
Moving on to citizen concerns, we have a couple. Would you like to speak or are you good? Okay, all right. Then we move to council concerns, Mr. Miller.
So I wanted to bring up, I had a, we had a tree at Quail fall on a house. And we all know what the laws are and everything on that. Is if the tree falls on a house, it's their responsibility to do everything. But I just, I, I went out there just as a courtesy and looked and took pictures and everything else of what she did. And there was about nine feet of where the tree fell that was actually on our property that they paid to have removed. And I didn't know if we wanted to look at something where somebody does that. In other words, if they would've cut the tree off at the property line, we probably would've just left it, because it's not in an area that affects the golf course or anything like that. But they, when they cut it, when SNS cut it at the, at the back of the stump, they took it all. So in other words, they paid for a partial removal of a tree that was on our property. And through an email, I think, I think you were on that chain and Steve Unger was on the chain, I asked him, I said, is it appropriate, I'm not saying it is or isn't, is it appropriate for us to give them a little bit relief just for that section that was on our property, which I called to ask how much it would cost to have that? And it was, it's almost nothing compared to what they still owe. So it was about four to $500 is what it would've cost to have that section removed, if we would've paid to have that removed, which, like I said, we probably wouldn't have even have done it if they would've cut it off at the property line. So I'm just bringing it up as something that if, if, I guess I'm trying to be proactive in case that would happen again. And say the tree was farther back and it fell and they came, they had it removed and they get this big bill and realize that, you know, 25 feet of it was on city property, that they would have to come and clear that with the city before they, they went ahead with that. So we wouldn't be in some sort of a battle between them and say, well, we removed 25 feet of tree that was on your property, so why do we have to go through?
So if there's a tree on my property and it falls and it is big enough or the lines are such that it would be on Chad's property and city property, let's just say. My thought would be that the cost to remove the tree that has fallen would be the obligation of the, of the property owner on which the tree was located. I don't know, it's an interesting concept. I don't know, I don't know how you would enforce it. I don't know, you know what I'm saying, if.
She, she was asking.
I'm not, I'm not saying this to be negative. I, I'm just thinking through how you would uniformly apply that. You see what I'm saying? How you would, and I don't, I don't know how you would do that.
Well, that's why I was saying is if they wanted to have the tree removed, the part of it, and there was two sections on different properties.
Right.
That if they wanted the other property owner, since they're responsible for the damage to their house and everything else, if they wanted the other property owner, in this case the city, to pay for part of it, then they would have to come and give us the opportunity, because maybe we can find somebody cheaper or whatever to be able to do it. Since they went ahead, you know, it's one of those things where the company's in there, so they just take the whole thing out.
I mean, here's the deal, you, you can always agree to do something if, if you believe that the city has a responsibility to do. I mean, you can always do that. I would be a little hesitant to put something mechanically in place, because I, for that, for what you just said, you could probably always find somebody to do it differently or cheaper. And then what if we decline? So to your point, to your first point, we, we look at it and say, okay, we, we don't need it removed for, for the reasons you stated. I don't know, I've never.
Was that not the same situation we got into with Cherry Street?
No, with the terror? Nope. Nope, because that was on her property and, and, and there was no. Correct. And, and we actually had a, had a, well, we have a survey now. We got in, because it was on our right of way, then that's our responsibility. She argued it was and we actually went through a lengthy investigation and determined it wasn't. But, but you're talking about is where it comes down. And that's a different issue, but I, but I don't, but I still don't think, Jim, that it would rise to the level of us wanting to put a, put a process in place where we would reimburse.
So if they, if they would come, if they would do the research that I did and see how much it would've cost to remove the part that is on our property, still on our property even after it fell. And, and they came to city council and said, well, this is how much they estimated it would've cost. Can you just reimburse that amount?
You'd do that. I don't think you have to have a specific ordinance to address it, but what I'm saying to you is, my legal opinion is if you've got a tree on your property and it falls onto his, that's you. You've got, you, you've gotta take care of it.
Responsible for you.
You have to abate, you have to abate the entire thing. And I don't think whether, whether it matters.
Are you, are you saying that the owner of the tree has to cover it? That's not what the law, the law, because when Steve sent it back, it's, it was, unless the tree was dead or dying, then you knew it. Then everything as far as removal and whatever is covered by the homeowner's insurance that fell on.
Oh, I don't think, I don't think.
Even on the personal property, my tree fell on.
So I've not seen that email, is that what he says?
I think that's right, because I think we had that issue with.
Like. Okay, I've not seen that. Did he send that to me?
I, I actually had a situation when I lived on First Street, Judy's tree fell.
Guys, need to speak into the mic so they can hear the, for the minutes.
I, I actually had a situation where Judy's tree fell on mine on, on First Street and it came across the alley and took my fence out. And I was responsible. She, she took care of getting the tree cut up, but I was responsible for the damage it did to my fence.
Really?
Yes.
Wow, see, I've, I've done the opposite.
Yeah, and I would've thought, just, just like Mark thought.
I think on that, I think on that, what you guys are looking at is what I look at is you just be a good neighbor and you just do it.
I sued somebody, I mean, it's been years ago, so the law may have changed. I may be, I may be in a touch with.
Yeah, there, there was a definite email from, I thought you were gonna change since Steve said it, but where he, he said that it's a responsibility of the homeowner.
Yes.
And he said, the homeowner, not the tree owner.
Correct.
It was our insurance company and other.
Okay, so you didn't send it to me. Can you send that to me?
Yes.
So, I mean, I'm willing to, to back up and just say, if you would like for the city to consider that, have them come to the council, maybe your board of works, whoever's responsible for that.
I just raised you good enough.
Well, I know that, but I'm only, but, but once again, I'm only asking to, I would have only asked the council or the board of works to consider how much it would've cost just to remove a part of the tree that's on.
Well, sometimes when they fall in the city, to say that they go down from the property owner's road, we'll only cut to our right of way and the rest up with you.
And that's what I'm saying, that if I was them, I would've done, I would've said, you cut it right here and then maybe, maybe it would've reduced the cost a little bit.
I know it's changed.
Yeah, the big, the big cost to them was they couldn't get into their backyard because it's moist and wet.
Where was it?
Uh, it's on Sierra Drive to one of the duplexes, two-story duplex on number two. Right where, you know, that stand of trees between, between their house.
Two green and four tea, or three tea box?
Well, because yeah, between two green and then the house. Straight, straight up. So, yeah, and so like I said, I thought maybe the tree was like in the middle of the woods. Pretty close to property. So, anyway, I, like I said, she said, I was just hoping you'd be a good neighbor. I said, well, you don't understand how many times people come and want us to be a good neighbor and it would be really expensive for the city to do that. I said, the only thing I can ask is if we cover the cost of whatever cost, just take that nine-foot trunk away.
Chad, do you have a comment?
And that law's changed. Then that's changed, because I, if, I, what I'm thinking, what I'm remembering was reversed. It used to be.
Right. Well, and what I'm, right, and that's what I'm saying, is we probably wouldn't have paid to have it removed.
This man would know a little bit too.
So anyway, I don't want to take up too much more time. I just wanted to know what, I took some pictures and you can see, and I said, it's not, we're talking about a trunk about this big around probably, and about nine feet. And they were gonna stick it out toward their property before, before it got to their property. Okay, the tree on Quail fell in the ice storm, okay? Was not dying or damaged or anything, it just fell, act of God type thing. Fell on a house on Sierra Drive. And so they came in, their insurance and everything, adjuster came in, and then they had SNS come in and remove the tree. And the bill just to remove the tree was 17.5, because, because they had to bring in a big crane to come over to the top of the house. Anyway, I, I don't want to get into the cost, because I don't know anything about that. I'm just telling you what it was. And I called SNS to confirm that and they said, yes, that's how much it cost to remove the tree. And so, my question was, I know that that responsibility falls on the homeowner. The problem was, is after their insurance got them paying, they still owe a little over $9,000. And they wanted to know if the city would help. And I said, well, we can't help on anything except for my, what might've been left on our property. And I'm saying that if they just would've cut the tree at the property line, we probably would've left it, because it's not in an area that affects the golf course at all. So, has, and then to get back to the good neighbor question, since SNS did take that chunk of tree that was on our property, you know, would it be good neighborly for us to, let me say, we pay for that much? And I, when I called Kevin and asked him how much it would've cost to take that, he said about $500, $400, $500. Take that from where it fell to 9,000 feet to their property. I've got pictures of it. But, but the trees now, I mean, it's just, it's just the stump and whatever. He said, do you want me to grind up the stump? I said, no.
But if, if out here, I know it's a little bit different out here, if someone's, if Jim had a tree that fell across the road, depending on the property line, the rest would be a deed that's on the homeowner.
Yeah, that's not what they did, so anyway, they took the whole thing back to the stump. So, like I said, I just, I'm trying, I'm just trying to do due diligence, because she emails me about it every day. Wants to know. All right, all right.
You good, Jim?
I'm good, I don't want to, want to take any more time.
Council concerns, Mr. Russell?
None at this time.
Mr. Pryor?
None.
Mrs. Severs?
Yes, I do have. Given, given the recent events last week, I, I really feel strongly that the council needs to look at an ordinance to address these old buildings on the square and we need to start holding property owners, including myself, accountable. Because we've, we've got a building currently possibly on the east side of the square that we could be looking at the same problem we had over there. The problem is, it doesn't affect just that building, it affects everybody. You've got so many common walls. And I, I think we're getting slack on, on holding people accountable for, for maintaining their, their, their buildings. They're expensive old buildings, but if you don't take care of them, then product of what you don't take care of is just what we witnessed last week. And, you know, the city really did do the community a favor by jumping in and doing what they did, but it costs money. And we need to head those things off in the future. I, I really would like to look at an ordinance that specifically addresses these historic buildings.
So the other thing is, we're looking into is a trailer made for the fire department that if this goes down again and there is an entrapment, it's equipment that they could come in and put it on the buildings to try to shore it up till they get people out. Because Evansville has one and we had an entrapment happen over here and Evansville refused to respond. And the next place would've been Terra Home. And it takes about six hours to set it up, so basically, I mean, you know, someone's gonna die. We're not careful, so we're looking into having something like that in place as well here locally, because most of the people who have that trailer are actually in Boon though. But Evansville has the equipment.
And, and if there were more people, especially in that apartment directly to the south, by the time we got the equipment for our firemen to get up there, there, there would've been no chance to save a life here. What are you looking at, about 89, $90,000?
You said most of the guys trained directly in Boon, does Evansville depend on those guys?
They, they can, and then they call them out, but I would say Evansville has an offer too, true, but I was told that most of the people that do have the licensing is here, that's right. It's the same licensing for grain, that's why that's. So, we're trying to parse that out a couple of different places to see if that's live. But you build it up per how, whatever height it is, it's like an erectors, that's how it builds up and it goes into the wall and tries to stabilize it so they can go inside.
Does council have a comment on the ordinance? Sherry, reference the building line, creating one for the buildings on the square?
I, I, well, I mean, I, let me qualify my thought, because I own a property on the square as well and we've done some, we, we had, we repaired our back wall.
You have to put a whole new wall up.
We put a whole new wall up, because it, it basically becomes sand. The mortar deteriorates and, and the irony of that is, that was on a back wall that was not really subject to the constant, you know, weathering from the west, north or west. But, yeah, I mean, you know, the, the problem with, and then you get, you get into historical building status and, you know, I mean, it's clear to me that, you know, you have to have some kind of process in place to, to require it. But it's a fairly complicated analysis, really. I mean, and then the question becomes whether people would be required to spend more than their building's worth. I mean, I, I don't, the, the traditional answer is it's why you have insurance. I mean, as Jordan said.
Yeah. Could you imagine losing something right up here on this square?
Oh, no, I know.
With that common wall, again, that's exactly why we've got that problem over there, it's a domino.
But all of these do.
Now, the south side does not.
I say all.
Yeah.
A bunch of them do.
Yeah, I think Mellers and our building are the only common wall left on the south side. That's it. Everything else gone out.
When we owned the building next to the one we currently own, which is the, it's, it's, it's where the, oh shoot, it's between us and, and the bar.
Yes.
The saloon, whatever that building is. Used to be, years ago, the, the VFW. There are common walls there.
Is that Jim Cass's building? Did he sell that to the council?
Uh, a couple owners ago.
I don't know what you consider a common wall, there's three bricks between my building and the other's grill also. I own a, I own a row, he owns a row and we, Jordan, we own a row of bricks.
The one between my building and the one that we used on, that we sold, has a common wall, literally. In fact, we thought at one point of joining the two buildings before we bought the building down here and making that a law office with effectively incorporating both buildings. And the structural engineer came back and said, bad idea. Because it's a shared common wall, we don't think we can embrace it enough to go to the. I mean, it, it's a valid point. The mechanics of it, I think, are a lot harder. What I would probably do is see if there are some historical communities that have ordinances to that effect.
We don't have a, a historical society, so we can't hold people to historical guidelines. Because we don't have a society. But, okay, for example, there's a lot of buildings up here that don't have window panes. Water gets in that, it gets into that mortar and it goes down in between three layers of brick.
Great to replace our windows.
Yeah.
Certain boxes are bad on buildings, so more, it's like you said, or.
At the very least, you know, a, a window with no glass in it should not be acceptable.
Did the Smith Building have insurance at all?
The Smith Building?
We did. It was us.
No, before us.
I had one, too.
I don't know, if they have a loan on it, I don't.
That should be the bare minimum, is that.
Yeah.
We require insurance.
We put it on it right away.
Can these people not apply the facade grants to get windows?
If they, no, it's limited.
The facade grant is limited to.
Well, you can't have done any, you cannot have, we looked into, you can't have done any work on the facade. If you've done anything to address the facade, you're limited.
On, on the one that the city has?
Well, I don't know about the city, I don't know about the state, the state.
No, 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 we're, this is different. We're building now and the city have a.
Oh, I don't know about that.
Yeah, you, yeah, you don't have those type of limitations.
Did, did you guys allow roofs or no?
No.
Mistake.
I mean, it's expensive. I mean, I know when we were looking at the damaged ours potentially, and I think our wall was about $40,000.
We discussed it at the last meeting.
And had no, we had no choice.
We essentially tabled it at that time.
Because that's one of your biggest.
The other thing would be building inspector. You would have, since we don't, the city doesn't have their own building inspector, we rely on the counties. We definitely have to make, sometimes in the past, we've had problems.
Oh, no, we've had a ton of problems. So, so Sarah mentioned the media today, just real quick, I bet, I bet something we could do, we can. We have to pay somebody and we have to accept the liability that goes with inspections. And that person would probably have to be bonded. But, but it's, but it, but that is dovetail, dovetails into this whole issue. But what I, if, if the mayor were here, I don't know if you want to do it, or at the next meeting, I would probably appoint a committee of some three of you, you know, whatever, to, to investigate how to do that and what you think, you know, that the issues to address should be. And then take that information and see whether or not we can construct an ordinance that fits with your approval.
I think it's, I think it's really important.
And you know the building deterioration is a legitimate issue.
It really is.
Everywhere. Everywhere.
All right, thank you, that's all I have.
I have none. That moves us on to old business. Don't have any old business. Moving on to new business, proposed speed limit ordinance on American Way 2025-3.
Make a motion to have first read of ordinance 2025-3, speed limits on American Way. Second, Beth?
All in favor, respond with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it.
Ordinance 2025-3, ordinance establishing a speed limit on American Way and Liberty. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three, an ordinance establishing a speed limit on American Way and Liberty Boulevard, providing a penalty for violation thereof.
Make the motion to approve first reading ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, ayes have it. This is where we want to suspend the rules.
Sir, I'm not sure you can because there's a penalty provision.
So we have to do it at the next meeting?
I think you have to wait, yeah.
All right.
Anytime you have a penalty provision, you can't suspend it. Sarah was talking about. Yeah, SQ number sixty-two?
Yeah.
Because they wouldn't, this.
Oh, no, they, they were looking at it. End dot was here. Remember, they were here because they were looking about doing a truck.
Or the one thing.
You just stop that.
Yeah.
But I don't think they will.
No, I know, I know they won't because there's one right down the road.
Is it too close to trucking? Stop, but the way.
All right, looks like we have the compliance with statement of benefits. Real estate improvements, Boonville Homes in front of us again this month.
And all of the i's are dotted and t's are crossed this time. That was the reason we did it last time.
I'll lean on Sherri for that approval.
Uh, yeah, I'd make a motion.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. See, amend twenty twenty-five dash two salary ordinance to include, include rates for grounds crew. Michelle has, right there. Hi, Michelle, would you like to speak?
Yeah, so, um, there was some miscommunication between.
Michelle, you go to the mic. Well, because I can't hear you in the back. It's recording.
So there was some miscommunication between, uh, the superintendent, um, and some of the grounds crew staff when we originally did the salary ordinance, um, last August, I think it was. And that was not brought to my attention until recently. So, um, I wanted to address that and I wanna do what's right, um, and get these guys. It was, I think, less than nine hundred dollars to get them current. Uh, but I definitely wanted to, uh, reach out to you and see if you would approve that and get that salary ordinance updated so that the grounds crew can, um, get their pay increases for this year. Um, I know that they're gonna be working very hard this year. And additionally, um, some of the questions that were asked to me were, would we be willing to make this retro? So going back to when they should have gotten their pay increases, um, could we do that? And that's where the eight hundred dollars came in. I think it was like eight hundred and seven, um.
The number's beside it.
Yes, the number is beside it, um, that shows what it would take to get each one current, um, unless it wasn't.
Well, I've sent it to you guys in your packets.
Right here.
Now, here's my.
We're looking at fifty cents per hour, per person.
Yeah, sixteen ninety-eight twenty-five total, I think.
Yes.
But you've got Rick Hayes on here. He did get his raise.
Yeah, so if he did get his raise, we're, we'll remove him from that situation.
So his would probably be the.
And I did not change his on the salary ordinance. So I sent a revision for the salary ordinance, um, where I wrote out to the side of it what their pay would be, and I don't think I adjusted his at all. He's good. The, the report that had Rick listed on it was simply just a list of all the hours that have been worked from grounds crew.
Tammy, is there a concern? The retroactive pay, DLGF?
No, as long as, um, because you guys can amend, the elected official, you cannot amend salary. You can amend it, this sal, this ordinance anytime, so.
Like a retro is no issue?
They've done that before in the past.
Is it okay if I come look, uh, where you said sixteen, just to make sure?
So that's sixteen for the year? Because the question, when, when, yeah, you know, because Michelle did a good job of calling all of them and talking to us and letting us know. Uh, and so a question I asked, and I can't remember what you told me, Michelle, is it was eight hundred to make it retro, but I wanted to know how much it was gonna cost us for the entire year.
And I don't know, but probably three thousand if it's a fourth of the year.
That's what I was thinking, but they don't work as much in the first third of the year. They will in summer.
Okay, so, um, Tammy, thank you for saying that because the sixteen hundred number that you're looking at, that's the total amount of hours that have been worked as of that report for grounds crew. But if you add up the number to the left, um, it comes out to like a hundred and, I mean, eight hundred and something dollars to get them caught current. The sixteen hundred hour is what, how many hours have physically been worked up through the end of that report, which I believe is April tenth.
You know, we talked, it was gonna be total for the year, less than four thousand or three thousand?
I, I believe we said to be safe, um, forty-five hundred, let's start there. You know what I mean? So, um, if you're looking at eight hundred dollars to get them current through Q one, Q one and Q four look very similar to one another, so that gives us a sixteen hundred. Um, and then, you know, Q two and Q three, that's our season. So, um, they'll definitely need to work in more hours, so we wanted to pad it a little bit, um, just to make sure that we were okay. And I think another one of Jim's questions was, do you need to find a different income to pay for this? And I have it in the budget to do that.
If you remember correctly, you guys were gonna give them the raise anyway and then Tom came back and said he didn't want the grounds crew to get it.
Yeah, correct.
It was already in the, when you guys did the original talking and then he came back and said, no, so it was kind of a.
So was it, then we took it out?
Yes.
Yeah, and the communication elevated to me was, it was our decision to take it out. That was not the situation.
We're gonna need specific numbers for this motion.
No, just amend the salary ordinance. If you just amend the salary ordinance retro back to January one, will that cover it?
So I've got a question. I, I, I wanna go back. So what happens when the police chief or the fire chief or whoever comes back and says, I, I promised these people? Well, that's a little different because that's negotiated, but whoever, I, I promised these people a dollar more an hour and whoever was in charge didn't do it. I've never seen us amend a salary ordinance and make it retroactive. What I've seen us do, I think, is do an additional appropriation. Um, my, my only concern, I'm, I'm not, listen, I, this is not opposing giving people more money. I, I'm not opposed to that. But the question that I have is, once DLGF approves this, that was my question.
They approve the budget.
Well, no, I understand, but this is part of the budget.
Right.
I'm just asking a question because I've never seen us go back and amend it. If you think we can do it.
We amend them all the time.
But, but not make them retroactive.
Right. Well, there has been some because it's not actually been, um, I'm trying to think who it was that they did.
Yeah, I may not, I may, may not be aware. I just have never seen us make a retroactive amendment.
I mean, as long as it's in the, the actual ordinance, it says it goes back to, um, but I mean, you're the attorney, so if you don't think it is, then.
I'm saying I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm, what I'm saying to you is, it's not a matter of whether they get it. The question is whether or not, so if you amend it today, then it would be ob- obviously applicable moving forward. My only question is whether, what, the mechanics of it being done retroactively, that part which is retroactive. That's my only question. So, so obviously, if you want to amend it and it, it applies moving forward, that, that's clearly okay. The question I've got is the retroactivity component of it. And I, I'll be honest with you, I don't know the answer to that.
So that we wanna make the motion moving forward and then table the retro?
Yeah, I mean, if you table it and we, see if we can do it, um, that, that's a simple, that's a simple, by the next meeting. I have no problem with that. Um, and if, and if your will is.
So approving the raise going forward and tabling the retro part until we find out?
Just the mechanics of it, right. Or if there's a way to do a supplemental, you know, payment.
Well, the only bad thing, because I thought about that too, but then you need to take taxes out on it.
Right.
So, so that's why it was somebody, I think the parks, it went through the Parks Board too and they directed to do a check to them and then I got to thinking about it, but I can't do that because you need to pay taxes on employment.
Well, you could, you could.
How would you do that? Do you go back in and put it all back, you can backdate it all?
No, not in our payroll system. Go back and backdate.
Task work, so then all the taxes never been, would just be paid and put it in.
What I was gonna do was create a category in the salary in our program for others, which we've done that before, and that would, that amount of hours times fifty cents an hour would be.
That's what, that's what I'm remembering. As opposed to amending, I, I'm not a big fan of taking this ordinance and, and, and making it retroactive within the confines of the ordinance. There can be, and, and that's what I'm thinking we've done in the past, what you've just described. I mean, you take the taxes out and, you know, and so forth, so. I, I just, I wanna ask the question unless you feel comfortable with it the other way. If you feel comfortable with the other way, I don't care.
I mean, I don't care to, we can call State Department tomorrow and ask them.
Well, why don't you ask them? Because I've, I've never seen us do it in this fashion. And I'm just a little unsure.
Right.
That it's appropriate.
Okay.
And then, and then, you know, if they say, no, but here's how you can do it, I, I, you know, obviously, I'm good with that and it protects you.
So we do need to know if you want it to be, because their next pay needs to have payroll next week. Unless you wanna have a special meeting after you get the call and wait and do it then.
If it's gonna be retroactive, it's not gonna hurt to wait until next month to come up with that extra category, but we go ahead and give them the raise right going forward today.
Agreed.
So, I mean, we're talking a month and then they'll, they'll still get their money.
Right.
Okay, just give them a play there.
As, as to the retroactive amount?
Yes.
Only, right, right.
But, but they'll get their raise starting today.
I just, I, I wanna make sure, Tammy, we can do that. And if they say that's good, then we know moving forward, that's perfect.
So then just mark out the retroactive part on the ordinance?
Yeah, you just need to amend, so, so we need to read, read the ordinance and, and, and just by name and title only, and that part which is being amended. So if you have the specifics on what is being changed.
The only thing that said it retroactive was this part right up here.
Well, no, no, the specific, uh.
Right. That's the new rate.
For grounds.
I mean, for which, which.
Grounds crew.
Right, so, so all the grounds crew?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
No, not all of them. There's this many.
For grounds crew?
Yeah, it's for grounds crew, but there's a lot of potential around.
That aren't filled.
You don't have, you're right now.
So, so to. So there, there are ten spots that are being increased fifty cents an hour?
Right.
Okay. Here's what I think you should do just for the record. Request that we read the amended ordinance by name and title only. And I will just read very quickly the, the titles of those that are being amended and then you can amend it in that, that's all you gotta do. But we, but, but we, but we need to be specific so that it's some down the road, it's not, well, everybody got a raise. No, it's not the case. And then table that, the, the retroactivity part of it so we can make sure that this is the, what the, what the proper state park accounts approve way to do it. I make a motion, we read the amended salary ordinance by name and title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two, salary ordinance for the city of Boonville, um, with the amendments to the following line item positions increasing by fifty cents an hour. Grounds crew at golf course advanced, grounds crew at golf course beginner, grounds crew at golf course intermediate lower, grounds crew at golf course intermediate upper, grounds crew lead, lead mechanic, mechanic, seasonal maintenance, seasonal maintenance supervisor, and spray tech.
Motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it.
First second.
Where we suspend the rules. Jim?
Make motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All in favor, respond with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it.
Make a motion, there are second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash.
Two.
Salary ordinance amendments by name and title only.
Second that motion.
All in favor, respond with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two, salary ordinance for the city of Boonville for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to amend the following, um, line item positions of crossing at two, in the amount of fifty cents an hour. Grounds crew at golf course advanced, grounds crew at golf course beginner, grounds crew at golf course intermediate lower, grounds crew at golf course intermediate upper, grounds crew lead, lead mechanic, mechanic, seasonal maintenance, seasonal maintenance supervisor, and spray tech.
Make a motion to approve, um, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two.
As a minute.
As a.
Need a second?
Second that motion.
All in favor, respond with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it, motion carries.
Then you need a motion to table the retroactivity part until the next meeting.
Entertain a motion to table the retroactivity until the next meeting.
I make a motion to table the retroactivity until the next meeting.
All in favor, respond with aye.
I'm sorry, you said.
Chad.
Chad, you need to speak up.
All opposed, ayes have it.
He's got such a soft voice.
Retroactivity is tabled. Gets us to the approval of claims. Yes, about what? And so, there was a sixty-three thousand dollars for Vincent's Electronics. I'm just curious, does anybody know what that's for? It's April fifteenth? It's in the lit.
I bet it.
I can do new radios for the police departments. Radio has computers.
Electronics.
That's what Chad said, radios.
Make a motion to approve all properly documented claims.
Second. All in favor, respond with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Adjournment.
Make a motion for adjournment. Oh, yeah.
Jim, say second.
Second.
All, all in favor, respond with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it, meeting is adjourned.
They're gonna start being like MDLs at the Boonville Country Club meetings.
He doesn't wait for anything. As soon as, as soon as there's a motion to be made, he makes it because he said, we waste nothing. Everybody just didn't wanna say it.